All right. All right, we will now open the Waste Water Systems Improvement Project Workshop. We have Slayton and Kennedy Jenks here to answer our questions. And before we get started, I just want to say sorry. Okay, ahead of time, because we're going to be rough on you. So I just want you to know. But that said, I think we could start off with introductions. I'll start down at this end right here, Elaine, if you want to.
Well, I think everybody already knows me.
Well, yeah, for them then.
Elena Turpin, Assistant City Manager. Nice to meet you.
Melanie Wagner, City Manager. Thanks for being here tonight.
Peter Watts, City Attorney.
Charity Hughes, City Council.
Sean Drinkwine, Mayor, let's get it.
Paul Strobel, City Council.
Michael McRoy, City Council.
Heidi Prokop, City Council.
Jonathan Metcalf, City Council.
Go ahead, see. And you can just go through.
Yeah, we'll just go, I'll go ahead and let you take the lead. We've got a presentation. This CD can pull up and they'll walk through it. They've given you a provided a agenda here or kind of the order of operations, I guess. And so we'll let Sean go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm Sean Spargo and Kennedy Jenks is Project Manager. I've met most of you. I've got Allison.
I'm Allison Lokenz. I'm one of the design engineers from a Kennedy Jenks.
Rob Beckloff, Project Manager with Slayton.
I'm Eric Brammer, Preconstruction Manager of Slayton.
So we're here to discuss the plans for improving the wastewater treatment plan. Most of you are familiar with them. We can kind of run through this real quick if and get right to the cost estimate if that's going to be the topic of conversation. So next slide. On the left is our site plan, what we'd propose at the pre-design phase, what we you've seen before in council session. On the right is our 60% site plan, which looks very similar to what we were planning. The layouts almost identical. Next slide. In addition to that, we're putting a new pipe out into the river to meet DQ's mixing zone regulations. Extending that outfall to deepest portion of the river that we can, meanwhile, keeping it closer to the plant to avoid having to pipe downstream. Next slide. So where did we go from here? We got slated on board in April. We completed the 60% end of June. We did our 60% value engineering meeting in August. We met with PG on the outfall installation. They had some additional concerns. We'll get into that in a second. Permitting with DQ to get the SRF funding released is kind of our next step. We've got to complete the SERP or SERP process for environmental regulations so that DQ would release funding. Because of the VE items, we asked DQ for permission to do a couple of things. One of those things was to delay the outfall to a future scope of work. Meanwhile, we're still barreling towards this MAO deadline, which seems to be slipping along with weight. Next slide. So that gets us to the cost estimate. We gave Slayton our 60% drawings. They did a complete takeoff. It's very detailed. This is kind of the summary sheet where it talks about what they value the work at. 64 million after markups and then on top of that, we had some contingency. And then they add their their contract fees, which is their profit on the job and their CMGCP, and we get to a total of 72, which is a pretty scary number. Any questions on the cost estimate?
How much contingency was in the original $42 million bid?
The same percentage, I think 20%. Next slide. Some reasons for the cost estimation. We're adding design details as we go from 30 to 60. We're designing the buildings. We're designing ventilation systems, the piping. We rely a lot on textbook cost estimating. So as engineers, we use RS Means, which is published industry cost data. We take that, wrap it into our estimates. They usually come pretty close.
How often is that updated?
It's updated annually. We're used to 2023 edition for this cost estimate.
Does that mean that the updates in 23 were products that were purchased in 22 for the price?
Correct.
Thank you.
So some of the main cost drivers, electrical equipment. We thought we wanted to do the DSG program where PGE pays to maintain your generator and offsets a bunch of your capital costs. We put it out to bid, Slayton did. The pricing we got back was unfavorable. We went through an exercise of removing the DSG requirements. You'll see that, I think, on one of the VE items was don't do TSG. It's too expensive. We did the same thing on the switchgear. We went back and forth a couple of times. But those those costs were just much higher than we ever anticipated. We were low on concrete. We were low on yard piping. They ask compliance, which is American iron and steel. Adds quite a bit to the unit prices for anything that's metal on the project. That's like grading, that's piping, that's valves. So factoring that in adds what? About a half a million? We didn't do that. Balancing the earthwork versus demolition, we were low on both of those. There's a lot of earthwork in just off hauling the dirt that we didn't account for. And then we just had different assumptions than the contractor did on how you'd go about installing the outfall. They thought it was appropriate to install a cofferdam. The cofferdam is pretty expensive. We didn't account for that cofferdam. So that's kind of the major differences between our original estimate. It's really just more detail. It's hard to price off a napkin sketch, but the 60% is pretty complete, so.
What was the increase in the when you say raw materials on concrete? Is that like literally yardage of concrete being poured down, like acquiring materials? And what did you guys estimate that was the increase there? We saw about a 7% increase in the cost of concrete. The beginning of the year, they typically update it annually. Is there was there an update? Was it more than 7%?
And we need your your experience in.
Yeah, the industry, yeah. We pour a lot of concrete.
We do it on a cubic yard basis. And for this project, we were estimating it like 700 for material plus labor to install. So that includes all the formwork, all the rebar, the raw, the raw materials.
Or cubic yard.
Or cubic yard. And what's Slayton's telling us based on prevailing wages that it should have been closer to 1100? Somewhere in that.
The raw material, sorry. The raw materials for this type of hydraulic structures are a lot more expensive. I'm talking to quiet now. So like for concrete, for instance, for the hydraulic structures, so there's no cracks that it leaks through, you're paying more like $280 a cubic yard. Which is astronomically more than you would typically pay for any other commercial structure. So one of the big issues with RS Means is it's an industry-wide publication and it's not geared towards this type of industrial, you know, waterproof tanks, you know, sewer gases that cause explosion and corrosion issues. And so that's why, you know, engineers appropriately use RS Means because that's what's available to them. But our costs are based on the last treatment plant that we built and what we paid that ready mix company in that town.
What number I guess? What number do they? Because we're paying about 220 a yard for 3,500 PSI concrete. What was the assumed number that wasn't 280 per yard?
They had 700 all in. So the the other difference between the way engineers estimate and the way contractors estimate is they just have a dollars per cubic yard, all inclusive, no breakdown, no backup behind that number. And we're estimating the cost of the rebar to buy it, to install it, to buy the ready mix, the labor, the forms, all the individual components.
Is it? But it's the raw materials that went up dramatically that changed the price? Is what was?
We believe so. It's impossible to tell for sure because they just have 700 all in per RS Means. And we're substantially more than that.
So it could be could be significantly the labor was skewed. We don't know whether it's material or labor then?
Not exactly, no.
Okay.
But we do know that industry-wide concrete is a lot more expensive for these type of water bearing structures. There's a lot more rebar in these hydraulic tanks than in a typical building slab.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And out of curiosity, when when do you guys know that? Do you know that just upfront?
Yeah, we build primarily treatment plants, so we don't know that for sure until we get a quote from the local ready mix company. But there there's a range from, you know, $200 a cubic yard to $400 a cubic yard. That is the possibility given, but you don't know the actual price until you work with the local batch plant because it's based on their aggregate and how much the aggregate makes their concrete shrink, so how much chemical add mixtures you need to make the tank not leak.
So when you looked at the original bid, though it didn't stand out to you, 700 didn't initially just seem hmm, that could be low comparable to say silver to or somewhere?
The so the Kennedy Jenks cost estimate at 30% was done prior to Slayton being hired. So we we did not.
But once you guys were won the contract, were awarded the contract, you saw their cost estimates. I mean, how long was that period of time before you guys started conversating, saying your numbers are way off?
We did give them some QC comments about some of those unit prices being low. And Kennedy Jenks worked on some value engineering to offset some of those changes. But we did not go back and rerun all the numbers for the full job because we were, I think, about four weeks from when we got the 60% drawings and we did our full estimate from from scratch, taking out the whole job. So we did not go back and revise the 30% estimate.
Thank you.
So we did have the V session in August to, once we got Slayton's full cost estimate, to try and see what we could do to drag that cost back to the original number. We what discussed 41 different design changes. The city is only interested in considering 22 of those. If you add them all together, including two items that I think the city would need to do in the future. If you chose to defer now, we're looking at a reduction in cost of about 16 million. And that defers demolition of the existing treatment plant, which I'm sure is nobody's a fan of. And it also puts off the outfall work until we're sure that we can get FERC approval for putting the pipe behind the dam. They have concerns about it breaking loose and damaging their intake structure. What are the impacts on the dam? So we have to do buoyancy calculations. We have to do engineered calculations for the the ballast blocks to ensure that it won't float in a 500 year event, I think is what they said. It's going to take time to prove that to them. In the meantime, the Army Corps is reviewing our application. They were going to be the lead on archaeology. We we made a decision to get the funding released more quickly to try and stay on schedule to to have them pull that permit back and make DQ the lead agency. So now DQ approves SERP. Do you have a question?
Yes, you you had mentioned the 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 change in in the dam or the change in the outflow there. Is that due to the, I think you called it the coffer? The cofferdam?
The the cofferdam didn't so much raise concerns as much as the pipeline itself, which is a plastic pipe and it's neutral buoyant. So I'm not really sure what they think it would do if it broke loose, but it's likely to float behind the dam until the city could recover it.
I part of why we wanted to separate the outfall as a separate work project is because after our meeting with PGE, we found out this is going to have to go through FERC, which is a federal agency, which is going to take a lot longer timeline. And we want to separate these two into two projects. That way we're able to keep and get the plant up and running while we're still working through all the federal agency requirements.
Yeah, I just want to kind of make sure I'm on the right page. So of the value engineering that was actually reducing the cost of scope of work that's staying in the project, how much of that's reflected in this number? Like changing, like finding a better way to do something and saving money in a process rather than removing scope of work. What I'm trying to get to is the number is if we're removing 16 million by deferring work, what was that number? What did you estimate the value of that in the original $35 million estimate?
I don't have that breakout, Mike.
If it were 70% less than estimated, we'd say it's maybe 10 million of the 35?
Probably less than that. I mean, if we're at 72 and.
Yeah, that's hard to answer. That's hard to answer because we, in the value engineering process, we looked at everything. Some of it is is materials, some of it is means and methods. So some of it, you don't give up anything. And it's just more of a, you know, how are we balancing the earthwork on the site to not spend a bunch of money on off haul? So there's some of that in there where it's savings, where where Kennedy Jenks didn't account for that in the first place. And we found out a better way to do it than our original estimate, the Slayton original estimate. Then there's the the scope changes like you're talking about where you actually gave up something. You know, you have, you know, less.
Is is the 16 million that you're listing there deferring the outfall and removing demo of the old plant? Is that removing work from this from the scope?
Yeah, the 16 million is all the value engineering, including the stuff we removed from this scope as a deferral. So the 16 includes the.
It's not just those two items. It's a list of items.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's the read it, but yeah, understood. 22 accepted or tentatively accepted changes to the job.
Gotcha. Do we have any idea how much scope was removed from the original estimate? I'm just trying to figure out, like, if we're going from 35 to 53, whatever the number is, I just want to make sure we're not saying we're going 35 because if we're really going from 23 to 53, that's a different number to swallow than that because they have, we're removing a bunch and deferring a bunch of work to later, and we still have to pay that bill. That bill is still going to go to all the rate payers in the city because that work is going to have to be completed to satisfy DQ at some point after we go through the federal process. And then the rates that we're giving to all of our citizens, that's not really the real rates because there's a bunch of work being deferred and the rates are going to continue to go up beyond that number. So I just want to make sure that we have a clear picture of what the real, the the stuff we're pulling out of the scope of work, what the impact is going to be later on the rates as well. It's kind of something I was trying to think about. Is there any way to get to that number?
Well, so the $16 million includes $3 million of deferral. So the $3 million is all we're pulling out that has, well, the demo doesn't have to be done in the future, but we assume you would want to at some point.
Gotcha.
The outfall is the only like mandated part of the project where you have to do that. We believe you have to do that to meet the mixing for the new plant.
Gotcha.
And and that is being deferred because of a permitting reason, not from a cost-saving measure because FERC, the Federal Dam Safety Agency, has no timeline for reviews.
Understood.
And and it was unknown that they governed this strip of land where your outfall is. That is not typical in our experience because it's not a dam, but it's upstream, close enough to the dam that they have jurisdiction and we didn't know that.
How does the amount of affluent that this facility is processing compare to the one that you're building in Yelm, Washington?
I don't think that Slayton has a project in Yelm. I think when we were in Stellar Jay construction. Stellar Jay is doing an MBR plant in Yelm, Washington.
Okay. Have you, have you in Dundee, which is where I've seen you the most or other cities, have you had competitive bidding that involves Slayton and and were they in line with other bids? Were they high?
We did the Hermiston plant with them, which is a six MGD MBR plant, and they were the selected look better.
And what was that bid?
That was over 10 years ago, so.
Okay.
I don't recall.
I mean, we, Eric can talk about it, but we do hard bid jobs all the time. We have what? Four with Clean Water Services right now. We like to do that to help keep our pencils sharp, but we hard bid jobs all the time and we do alternative proposal style we're doing now.
I mean, my, I think our lived experience always informs, you know, how we view things. And in my experience with Kennedy Jenks is that their numbers in other jurisdictions have been pretty accurate. And so I wasn't surprised during this process because of inflation and other factors that I'm seeing in every city represent to see that number go from around 29 to 42, particularly when you factor in the contingency. But to go from 42 to 72, I've just, I've, I have never seen them off by that sort of factor. I mean, I've seen bids come in lower than they estimated or a little bit higher, but not more than like 10%. And we're talking about like 70% here. I mean, adding 30 million to a $42 million project is, we have a lot of people on fixed incomes and we have a lot of families with young children. And I know what happens when we get PGE rate increases. And I mean, if if and I know the city council and I have to assume that if they had an idea that you believed that Kennedy Jenks was off by this sort of factor, it probably would have, I'm sure it would have impacted the the selection. Because again, we're not talking about 10 or 20% work. We're talking about like 170% of what had already been adjusted up for inflation from that 29 to that 42. So when you say, well, there's been inflation in the last five years, yeah, I get that because we've all seen that. But when I get that you're saying they're off by $30 million, it's it's really difficult for me to to say, to compare that with my experience, which is that their estimates are very accurate. And I think that that's why when Melanie gave you, called me with the number because I was one of the first calls. And I was just like, how is this possible? And can we get them in a room to figure out what these numbers are? Because again, Sean and I, I mean, Sean's worked in jurisdictions that I've represented for over a decade. And, you know, I, he and the Kennedy Jenks team, in my experience, have been highly accurate. So I'm just having a lot of trouble reconciling this. And I know that our community is going to have a lot of trouble reconciling this from a rate perspective.
So to respond to all of that, like Rob said, Slayton, hard bids and wins about 20 to 30% of our annual volume. So we are very active in the market and we win our fair share. We're building the wastewater plant for salmon, salmon. No, not Salmon Valley, the other salmon, Salmon Creek. We're building four projects for Clean Water Services that were all hard bid, competitive bids. We built like a Oswego's Water Plant, our bid, Oswego's Wastewater Plant. We can provide a very long list of jobs we built in the past. But that doesn't matter because what matters is is your project here and making sure you're getting the best value. We are seeing extreme, I'm gonna say, pricing busts in the market right now, like Portimoro bid a couple of months ago. Their engineer's estimate was 110. They got two bids. One was 178 and one was 235.
232.
232. So there are this in other places, unfortunately, going on the market right now. You know, costs went up about 40% in five years from the start of the pandemic to now. And and we don't think that was adequately captured in publications, even though they say they did capture it. And and that's just the published indices. There's other things that are shortages in our market, like electrical gear went up over 200%. Those types of things are impossible to capture based on shortage pricing because they're just the price gouge because you need it. So there's a lot of that is going on in the market right now. But, you know, for us, our job is to help with the price of your project. And and we're not walking in here asking for you to give Slayton $56 million. This was our first estimate based on 60% drawings. It's our our professional opinion of the cost of the job based on other treatment plants we built in the Northwest with these requirements. And, you know, the our job is to get to a price that you feel is transparent and fair. So I mean, we're completely open book and transparent. Our entire estimate, everything we do is totally visible. And this right now is our opinion without getting bids. But at the 90%, when we planned on going out for guaranteed maximum pricing, we put out all the supply and subcontract contracts on the street with input from the city of who to solicit locally and get market pricing on about 80% of the project is typically we would get market pricing on. And that's just competitive bids from anybody who's qualified to do this type of work.
Right. I represent clients on the coast and my experience with public contracting over there is that the contractors have to house their employees in hotel rooms because there's such a workforce shortage on the coast. So I'm not surprised that you would say that that would be high as compared to an engineer's estimate, but this isn't the coast. Like we're in Estacada is not that far from the metro area. I I mean, I'm just, I I'm just having a lot of trouble reconciling what my, and and I have worked with Slayton in the past. You know, before Chuck Schrader went in-house with Slayton, I was his associate. So, you know, I'm aware of the type of work that you do in your reputation in the industry, which is great. But this numbers are a problem. It's going to be a huge problem for our community. And and I don't, I mean, it, I've seen estimates go up between 60% and 90%. Like we have another round left. So it's not like we're your value engineering and the price isn't going to go up again. Like there's no guarantee of that. So I'm, I mean, if we were, if we were not on such a tight timeline, I still think we're going to have to, A, talk to DQ and figure out what we're going to do, but I just, I'm seeing this number. And and again, I'm not trying to beat you guys up. You want to be as accurate as possible, but this number is not going to be palatable with community. That's just the reality of the situation.
And we've given Elena and Melanie, you know, we've recommended that they reach out to a third-party consultant. We see that on a lot of projects. They'll double check KJ's number and our number. There's many different ways they can do it.
Yeah, and I, what I've seen is that lead to a lot of inefficiency. So the more cooks you have in the kitchen, the longer it's going to take to make decisions and get through the process. And so like, I'm, I'm kind of looking at Kennedy Jenks and saying, like, what are we going to do, guys? Because this is not going to be palatable. We can't, we can't, it's not like the state of Oregon is going to give us an extra 20 million either. I mean, we had regional solutions team out here the the Wednesday before last. And we're got brought the school district in, had them get a bus, took them to our sewage treatment plant, explained our water issues. We have 120 million that our school district is claiming to need because of our population growth here. We have the water issues. We now have the sewage issues. Where our SDCs are going up. And if you add an extra 30 million in a city like Estacada, that's real money. Like money that's needed for something else because we've, we're having huge population growth.
I don't know if now it's time to want to get into detail. I mean, after seeing the numbers, I just kind of looked through some of the line items that were mentioned at when we were having a briefing about it, like a 2,000 square foot building being $1.7 million. I just, the world where that's a real number, I'm just trying to understand. I mean, I'm good for them if they're getting $1.7 million for a 2,000 square foot, very basic building. But what, how do you guys put a number like? What what number do you use for cost per square foot for concrete? Because the number I was getting was like $85 a square foot, which is 1,000% more than what I'm used to seeing for a six inch slab with rebar in it. Where where do you guys get that number for your square foot number for concrete, for instance? Where where's that pulled from?
So we don't estimate concrete by the square foot like that, but we can create that number, but it's it's based on the four man-hours, the four materials, the concrete, the rebar by, the rebar install, the finishing labor cost. We build it up by the, you know, 10 or so different activities that it takes to place that slab. And then we apply the the.
But you guys actually pay someone $85 a square foot for a six inch slab with rebar on it?
No, we we pay the ready mix guy and we pay the rebar supplier and the rebar installer and the pump truck and the finisher.
I'm familiar with the process. I'm just mean, but at the end of that, you're paying $85 a square foot for six inch slab with rebar in it?
I don't, I didn't run the numbers, but if that's what our estimate says, then I guess so.
I mean, you're talking about $850 a foot for like a utilitarian basic office space. Like it's 2,000 square feet and it's at 1.7 and, you know, I.
$850 a square foot, not 100, yeah, 850.
$850 a square foot. It it's just like, that's, that's the sort of number you might see if you're building in the West Hills or something, but you know, and have a still system. But, yeah, I mean, this is a utilitarian office building. So, I mean, I work out of Icon Construction's offices, so, you know, I, we, I hear all the time about the cost of labor and cost of materials and everything. Eight hundred fifty bucks a foot? That's just not.
So when I, when I ran the numbers, I got something different. So I guess I'll have to go back and look at where the eight hundred and fifty square foot's coming from. I thought our admin building was one point three million dollars. Uh, for twenty-five, sixty square feet, which is a little under five hundred a square foot, which granted is still expensive. I'm not discounting that. Um, but you know, the pro- process buildings in our industry run about six hundred dollars a square foot. Uh, and admin is not a process building, so it should be cheaper. Um, but it does have an industrial lab inside of it for doing all the wastewater treatment, uh, stuff. So there's about a hundred thousand dollars in there for the lab, acid-resistant countertops and sinks and piping and all those things that wouldn't be in a typical building. Um, but we, we did work, uh, with the city to figure out a prefabricated option, um, which is part of the value engineering, is, is hiring somebody to fab it off-site, so it is cheaper. Um, and, and we found somebody who's done some local-ish buildings that offers, you know, prefab offsite, truck it in, so it'll do as a foundations, uh, and then build out the lab inside of it. And they're telling us three hundred dollars a square foot for their service to prefab the building, plus then the earthwork, the foundations in the lab and hooking everything up, so.
And that's a modular, like a trailer, basically.
Yeah, it's a triple wide. And then they fab the roof separately in sections, so they bring in the triple wides, splice it together, bring in the trusses in three sections.
And that, and that is more expensive than my house with land per square foot for a modular building to be built off-site, three hundred dollars a square foot, where if you're buying land with a, with a house here, you're paying two hundred dollars a square foot. So without the land, we're paying, we're paying a hundred dollars a square foot for a trailer to be brought in. Uh, what was the total cost of the modular building and what was the square footage?
Uh, it was three hundred dollars a square foot and we were reducing the building size, I think fifteen hundred square feet.
Fourteen forty? And what was the co- the total cost of it? Four hundred and thirty-two thousand.
It just, the, the, it just seems like we're paying so much more money and getting so much less. I mean, that's the biggest thing that I can't wrap my brain around. Um, you know, this estimate that we got from Kennedy Janks, you know, came in and, and, and that floored us, that, that number floored us. You know, forty-two million dollars, that number, that number hit us, hit us all in the gut. And then, you know, to, to come back thirty mil-, you guys come back thirty million dollars more. Um, I just, I, like Peter said, I just can't see that Kennedy Janks is gonna be, you know, that mu- their estimate is gonna be that far off. You know, and I hate to see all these, this value engineering, because that means that we're getting less. We're getting less, we're getting less than what we, you know, originally planned. We're getting less of everything. You know, and we're paying a whole lot more money for it. Um, I just, I can't wrap my brain around it. I know I'm not in that industry. I just, but, I mean, even, even in the auto industry, you know, over five years, even in the auto industry over five years, uh, the cost of a vehicle doesn't go up a hundred and seventy percent over a five-year period, you know? I don't know, I just, like I said, I just can't wrap my brain around it. It's, it's a huge hit and that's a, um, that's a lot. I live here, you know? I live here. I'm just like anybody else in this community. Um, you know, that, that type of rate increase that, you know, that's gonna hurt a lot of people. So.
What's been your experience? Kenny Jinks, uh, of your last ten projects that you gave an estimate for, how many of them had a seventy percent increase in them?
I, I can't think of one.
When was the last time you had one that was seventy percent off?
Never.
Ever? Okay. So it's a unique situation. What was the highest percentage you've been off in the last five, or since you've been with Kennedy Janks?
Twenty percent. I'm just guessing.
So I'm just trying to figure out what happened. So you keep saying that, I keep hearing that in the last five years inflation gone up, but the numbers were updated annually. And so you're using numbers from cost from two thousand twenty-two for your two thousand twenty-three provided estimate. So we're talking about not five-year window or for electrical to go up two hundred percent, the gouging, all that stuff. It's really a two-year, I'm just, is it a two-year window that we're talking about? The, the change in prices that, that we're dealing with inflation when we talk about it?
It's a two-year window, but we're, we're missing quite a bit of the quantities that we had in the sixty percent estimate. It's a thirty percent. I didn't know that we needed separate HVAC systems for the lab and the admin building as an example.
Yeah.
And you start, those things compound, right? So if we, we missed enough, that it makes, I don't know, a big difference. It, it starts to add up to seventy percent of hurries. I'm not saying that seventy-two is the right number and-
Is, in your experience, like when it goes to the ninety percent, you send out for actual bids from contractors, does the price usually go up or down?
But does it go up or down? Understand what you're trying to do, but typically, does it go up or down?
I have a job that just went up ten percent, uh, but my last four jobs went down. Varies by project, project by region and depends on-
Local labor, stuff like that, yeah.
I just, you have to forgive me, but especially Sean, I mean, we sat here, went through this with you before we awarded you guys the contract. To account for shipping delays, cost increases overseas. You know, if we go this CMCG route or whatnot, we can get things on the way to help save money. I mean, you're not talking about you missed on one or two or three things. You have a list of what, what'd you say, twenty-two accepted?
Forty-one.
Forty-one?
And twenty-two accepted.
Yeah. Forty-one things that you missed on, so like, I'm, I'm not trying to be rude or any sort of disrespectful, but it's not gonna cut it to say, I didn't account for this, I didn't account for that, I didn't account for this, I didn't account for that. That's incredibly unprofessional. I'm sorry, it is. I'm just gonna be blunt. You're, you're talking about thirty million dollars you missed on. Thirty million.
That's if they actually missed on.
I, I'm, I'm having a, a hard time understanding amongst professionals, right? To sit in a room and do this in multiple locations on multiple jobs like you've stated. How you can't take a quick glance at a number in a project, when you're doing a project less than an hour away from here. How you can't take a quick glance and be like, hey, guys, I don't know that this number's gonna work or that this number matches. For the life of me, I, I, I'm not understanding the breakdown in communication right there, because there's in some way, shape or form, somebody should have been on the phone much sooner and said, this is going bad fast. Right? Because I mean, you're talking about missing enough stuff that would possibly damage your relationship going forward with a community, a city?
Yeah, no, I understand you. It, it was a shock to me and we didn't see the number until August. So that's why we had the value engineering session. That's why we're trying to drag the number back. And the value engineering session isn't all taking stuff away. It's just, could we do this a different way? Does it provide the city the same benefit? Does it also save money? Like that, those are the ones you want to take, right? So the ones that we accepted up here, you know, half of them are that. It's not like we're giving you half the capacity in the treatment plant. It's still at the same capacity. It's just, maybe we're not digging that basin as, as deep as we showed a thirty percent or sixty percent. Let's, let's raise it up and see if we can save some money that way.
And put off this and shrink this and take away from this. I mean, do you see them?
Yeah, there's two items in there that I think that you're gonna need to do. We've called them out there.
And then my, my question for you, Eric, if I may, is like, I mean, you seem very well put together, right? I mean, you got numbers pretty quick off the top of your head. You know what's going on. I mean, at what point did this project land in your lap and then you look at it and you can't tell Kennedy Janks like, hey, realistically, this is not even close from my experience. I mean, especially when we're talking about cost of materials and stuff, you have working models of what stuff is currently costing you, do you not?
We do.
So where was the breakdown in like, even at a quick look, you guys couldn't come up with this and where was the communication between you guys on this?
When we were brought on board, on board in May, we reviewed some of their unit prices and gave them some feedback. But we didn't rerun the price of the little job, no. So that's probably where we failed.
So your feedback number, what was that? Like when you, when you're like, hey, we think you're a little low. Did you get, we, we think it's going to be closer to like fifty or fifty-five, or is that how the conversation went? Okay. I mean, I, cause, because when we have people that, obviously we had multiple people that competed for this project and nobody said these numbers seem wildly off during that process. And, and if you've done something as many times as Slayton has, I mean, this is what you do, like water systems, treats, sewage treatment plants. If you've done something as many times as Kennedy Janks has, I mean, it's like, I know how much of my time projects are gonna take. And they're always like, maybe a case I didn't know about, the change is my analysis. I mean, I know that being a lawyer and writing like legal briefs is very different than being an engineer. But I'm really surprised that at no point, somebody was saying, hey, Kennedy Janks, um, this number seems just dramatically off. Or so, so far off that it doesn't even make sense for us to bid it because the community's expectations are off by a factor of seventy percent. I mean, it's just like, I'm, it seems like at some point before August, one of the companies, because they, the others were like Hewitt and happening, I mean, these are giant companies that someone would have flagged that issue and been like, hey, city, your expectations might be wildly off. Like, we're not gonna do it till we get to sixty percent. But preliminarily, they seem really off under our experience. Like I, I'm wondering why that didn't happen. Cause this is, again, this is a, this is a huge factor.
I, I understand. I don't, I'd have to go back and look, but I don't believe we were given the thirty percent cost estimate to propose on the project. Okay.
Until when?
Uh, until after we were signed up. Uh, I don't actually remember when we got it.
Okay. Well, when did you review it?
I don't, I don't remember the date.
A month timeframe, May, June, July?
I think you said they got the, got it in May.
We, we were, the sign-on was in May, yeah.
Oh, and then sixty percent was done at the end of June. All right. So it was pretty quick where you started working on the sixty percent.
So the thirty percent design was post, the preliminary design was posted on the website before we issued the RFP.
The drawings.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, which had the costs in there.
They have the cost estimates in there.
Well, it had a, the initial cost estimate with the forty-two.
I remember, what, five years ago, five years ago, when this conversation started, we, we were talking nineteen, nineteen million dollars. You know, that's what the, the initial, you know, we were initially talking nineteen million dollars. And then to, you know, Kennedy Jinks comes back with a, no, it's probably gonna be more, you know, it's probably gonna be a little bit more than double that. Or, you know, now we're, you know, we're four times, you know, five times that amount. I mean, it's just, like I said, it's just really hard to wrap your brain around, uh, you know, five years of going up that much. Even if it's not five years, even if it's just based on the one year, the, the twenty-twenty-three numbers. Um, that's huge. That's absolutely huge.
I was just gonna suggest maybe we continue through the slides, because it'll show some of, like, some of the questions you're asking. What is, what did we, were we able to modify to make it less expensive or what did we just pull out? And then I think some of those things are kind of discussed later in the slides. Um, so for the sake of the community too, because I want the, if the community is gonna come back and watch this, I'd like them to get through the rest of the slides. But stop and ask questions anytime.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jonathan, finish answering your question. I don't know the exact date. It was sometime after we got on board. My memory is, if we were about four weeks from getting the sixty percent drawings. And so we did a quick QC and said, we're gonna estimate the whole job starting in four weeks. So we did not do a thirty percent estimate.
Yeah, and, and thank you for that. My, my question is just specifically, like I said, like all of you seem very well put together. You look at a lot of bids, a lot of jobs, I'm sure. Right? This is your wheelhouse. So when you see one and you see forty-two million, there, I just can't believe there's not a part of you that looks at it and goes, a wastewater treatment plant, forty-two million? Get out of here. Yeah, right. Like, y- you do this. You know, I, I don't, you don't need to even go line by line to know that forty-two million is probably not close. I just don't see that being the case. So I, I just, I want to know where the negligence comes from, quite frankly. And, and I don't mean directed directly at you, but between both y'alls parties on how you can't come communicate with a customer until you, you can't drop a thirty million dollar, seventy percent increase on a customer and then expect it to be palated. Well, you just cannot. I'm sorry. I mean, regardless, this is the community's money, right? This is taxpayer money. So ultimately, we behave to them anyway. It's their money. We have to explain to them why their money's being spent piss poorly, quite frankly. And I just, I'm, I'm just struggling to understand how a room full of professionals can't see the writing on the wall and say something and then drop it with us on a short timeline and expect us to try to pallet it and come with some kind of workaround? I mean,
There's a lot of passion in this room, but-
We could continue for the second-
Continue on with the slide so we can get all this out to the general public, so everybody sees what's up there and what you've come up with.
All right. So if you were to accept the VE items, you know, that pulls the cost of the project for construction back to fifty-eight, if you choose to continue with Kennedy Janks for engineering services during construction. We add that three million in for the deferred work, right? Um, there's still eight million in contingency in there. That allows us to add potentially some things that we've overlooked between sixty and ninety. Um, but it still leaves us, you know, fifteen million dollars over what we told you before. If the number is forty-two, it's sixteen million. Um,
And we're getting a lot less.
Not a lot less. I'm, we could talk through each item that we're choo- choosing to forego, but and a lot of it's constructability. If we can do this a different way, it saves money. And that's, that's why we had the next slide.
Some of the items are on the next slide.
So the, this is a breakdown of the early work amendment, number one. It, we had to buy these long lead items, uh, early so that we could stay on schedule. We bid these out, so the thirty percent shows what we had in our estimate um, originally. And then the middle column is initial bids, you know, the top row is the M-BAR equipment itself. It's most of the equipment on the project or at least half of it. Um, you could see how the, we worked through some of the details and specifications, um, saw where we could save some money, where we were maybe overspecifying some things. We went back to the vendor and asked for revised pricing and to the last column kind of represents what we were able to reduce those costs to. And on the backup generator, the difference between two point one and one million, just getting rid of the DSG requirement. We can get a standard generator. It doesn't need additional exhaust treatment and it saved you this much.
What is the model of that generator?
It's a, a cat. It's a one point five megawatt generator. And then the same thing on the gear, we had kind of high-end gear that was front pullout only, um, installed in the building that meets DSG requirements. We backed off on that. They said you could install this gear with, out the highest level of arc flash protection. It's industry standard still. Uh, could go outside. Doesn't have to be front pullout only and that cut the price in half.
Is that generator price just materials or material and labor?
So it's just materials.
Thank you.
So not too much higher than our original estimate, but still uh, a major reduction just by talking it through with the vendors, seeing if what we're specifying is reasonable. Maybe backing off on some of those higher-end requirements. Next slide. So what would the resulting site plan look like? Um, the green is area that we didn't initially plan to develop that we, we aren't touching. So if we were able to relocate that, the headworks kind of more centrally into the plan, I'm gonna stand up, because I think it's easier to point out, but-
There's a pointer state either that he could use.
Oh, it's okay. We had the headworks up here. Um, there's space here to put, if we shrink the size of the maintenance shop, that allows us to pull this driveway in. We had it up there. Uh, reduces the site work quite a bit, cuts down on the influence sewer length. Um, those are some of the changes that we made in the VE. Trying to think of some of the other ones. Um, we had a big- Trying to think of some of the other ones. Um, we had a big concrete. Tank for the digester, we think that we could do above ground bolted steel tanks instead. Um, it's gonna save quite a bit.
What's the life expend, expectancy of the bolted steel tanks?
Uh, thirty years.
And what's the life expectancy of the concrete tanks?
Fifty years.
And what will, rough cost, costs difference between the two?
About three million, two point seven.
You know roughly what that is as a percentage between the two?
I don't, off the top of my head.
Or the cost of each of them, maybe the cost of each of the tanks, the difference in cost between the tanks.
Just the tank itself or the whole option?
Whole option, well, I, what I was just, what I think he's trying, what I think he might be trying to get to is if you get sixty percent of the lifespan. Are we paying sixty percent of the cost? Are we paying eighty-five percent of the cost and we getting sixty percent of the lifespan?
So it says three point two, I think is what I'm seeing here. Which is how much they cost.
Cool, and other changes like the cell's smaller, so it means less air for the mixing, so you have one less blower, like, kinda have a real good effect through.
Yeah.
But the, the steel tank, that should blast through steel tanks, so it's got glass coating on the steel panels, so.
Beyond the thirty years? Okay. Yeah. Was it, was it, I guess, was the savings from switching tanks greater than the, what we're losing in lifespan? Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Is eliminating the digester altogether was something like four point six?
But we didn't wanna do that, right?
We didn't wanna do that. You need a way to manage solids. Um. Part of this was reducing the footprint of the MBR buildings, this red outline kind of shows what we would propose instead. It puts some of the VFDs outside of the space that allowed us to back off on. The ventilation requirement cuz they throw off a lot of heat. Um, so this would become kind of a breezeway slab on grade concrete with two pumps mounted outside instead of being totally enclosed. Um. This is a precast pump station, it's called the implant pump station, it takes all the flow from the various drains on site and then pumps them back through the screens. Um, before they hit the MBR, so it doesn't damage the membranes. We originally had this as a cast in place, extension of the tank itself cuz it's deep. Um, Sladen came up with the idea of using a precast wet well. Uh, they costed that out, significant savings, so we would recommend going with that option. Um. Trying to think of what. Raising this portion of the MBR saves quite a bit of money. Um. Before, I think we had it buried almost eighteen feet in the ground so that it wouldn't be, um. As visible, I guess, from the park. So if you were using the restroom or whatever, you wouldn't be able to see it, but if we raise it up, saves quite a bit in excavation. These pumps do increase a little bit in size, but it saves a significant amount. I don't know if we have that number.
I think we pulled back in the footprint too.
Yeah.
About a million.
Save a million to, if we don't bury it as deep.
And then, for this.
Yes.
For the admin building, we're recommending that you go with prefab, obviously. Um, three hundred square foot sounds a lot better than eight hundred.
I would recommend getting a bid from a local company to construct it. A regular building and go with that. Cuz I don't, I haven't seen any buildings going up for over a hundred dollars a square foot, even adding a hundred thousand dollar lab, I don't know where. I mean, we built a twenty-five thousand square foot warehouse with two thousand square feet of office for less than that. Here, two blocks away, so, uh, it's a crazy number for a modular building, but.
Will that come out, like, when you're doing the actual bids for the, um, GMP? Will those, like, would people be, would you be able to get local bids and that, what kind of, this is your estimate now? But if that's the case, then people would be able to bid and you'd take the low bid, is that?
Yeah. Yeah.
If we decide to do that, we can do that.
Yeah, agree. We don't bid that type of work, but I know a bunch of companies around here that do bid, that will bid it competitively and, and even with prevailing wage, be a lot less than three hundred dollars square foot.
Also, is, is to understand then that this is getting away from the whole idea of keeping it where it's not an eyesore. Essentially, isn't that the way that we kind of laid this thing out so that it'd be inside a building and contained?
It'll still look very nice. I think people will look at it and not know what it is. Cuz the, the bu, that part that will be taller, I mean, you can explain that, but I think it'll still be a building structure, right?
Yeah.
It would sit back, right, so the, this, this wall here would be elevated. But we proposed mounting soil up out here, kind of outside of this stormwater swell. And then planting this, so this would be landscaped, so it would be less visible from the restroom. But it would still be visible from the trail. So in this version, we're not proposing to touch the trail that wraps around the park. Uh, it pulls everything inside the, the property boundary, but that's the goal, uh, it gets us out of an easement with PGE. So there's a more direct path to permit that option.
Sean, any, any of the changes that we're talking about where we're moving things outside, is any of that changing the amount of odor that the community's gonna be dealing with? Is it gonna stink more now that we're moving any of this stuff outside of the building by reducing the footprint?
None of this stuff, but we're eliminating the headworks building, there's an option. And we don't have to take it, but the, the dumpster, which is the part that smells the worst, would still be in a building. Um, it'd have a roll up door on the front. But the screens and stuff would sit outside and we would cover the channels with FRP plate and then control odors by ventilating those channels. Um, it's probably eighty percent as effective as having the building there. Just when you go to maintain the screens, you won't have the, the benefit of that cover that you'd have to shut off the ventilation, so. Um.
What was the cost to enclose that? Uh, what was the cost savings by putting that outside?
You'd have to go back to that table.
Sorry, I'm making you jump around, but.
This is a good discussion, it's, it's kind of almost disheartening to think that. The cost between like building commercial industrial versus building government type structures would be. This much different. Um.
Yeah, that's the main complaint of the community is the smell. And that was the, that was the frustrating factor about staying in Timber Park. And why the community was so upset that we had to stay in, in Timber Park. And we, we swore to the community that there would be no odor, so I, I, I don't like that. Eighty percent is still not good enough for me.
Yeah, it's four hundred and forty thousand to remove the building and cover the channels.
I would say that's something that, in my opinion, I wouldn't wanna see value engineered out of it. I'd like to keep that contained and keep the odor as minimal as possible.
Okay.
When we're talking about things that we wanna strike out, don't, and it may not be the opinion of everyone, that's my opinion.
One thing that I would like to not see value engineered out is the, um, I, I want the old plant gone. You know, it's an eyesore. Um, we need to, we're taking away a lot of park space, we need to provide, you know, provide some space back. Um, whatever we decide to do with that, you know, I, I would wanna see the, um, the old plant. You know, at least that existing area, you know, deconstructed and, you know, made usable ground. Not to put a building on it or anything, but made, made it, it, you know, usable. If we wanna pickleball courts there. You know, make it usable, if we wanna put, if we wanna put grass there, um, to put a, a field in, you know, whatever we wanna do. But, um, you know, make that ground usable.
I, I would say that part of, um, part of the delay potentially, the, a good reason to delay is figure out what we wanna do there. Because depending on what we wanna do there, depends on how much we're gonna have to pull out.
Well, I, I.
So if we're gonna put, if we're gonna put park structure there, you're not gonna, if we're gonna put a building there, they're gonna have to tear out a lot more, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think that we, we would ever really wanna put a building there, um, just make it usable space, you know? Um, usable park space, usable field space, usable, you know, usable space. I don't wanna see that, you know, I don't want, nobody here wants that to be there once our new, uh, facility is up.
And I'm sure we'd have a, a reasonable amount of time to decide what we wanna put there before it's time to actually decommission that plant too.
Demolition's one of those things that is very pricing subjective, depending on who bids the job to, so we could make that, uh, an alternate to the project. Get pricing on all the demo, sometimes you'll get people that'll demo something for almost free if there's enough other, you know, resources they get out of it. Uh, we've seen that and we've also seen it go very expensive, so, um, that's certainly something we can put out to bid, get the pricing, present it to you. And, and then you could decide what you'd wanna do with it. Not, not with the intention of.
The type of, uh, system that we have over there is, do you see any value in it? Uh, for, for demo work? You mean like pulling wire and like scrapping things out of it for basically, I mean.
Yeah.
And reusing, repurposing materials that come out of that, is that, is that where the value is or?
I don't personally see a lot of value in it cuz I don't do demo work for a living, but the demo guys seem to see value in it. Cuz sometimes their bids are cheaper than you could even imagine doing it for, so.
Oh.
They, they do, they pull all the wire, they scrap the copper, sometimes they'll take equipment if it has usable life and they'll resell it. Uh, secondary market to other treatment plants, I mean, there's all sorts of people that specialize in that are good at what they do. And that's who we'd wanna hire to, to do your job, so.
Okay, any more questions at the table here? Have we gotten through the slide? I mean, that pretty much everything that's been.
Yeah, a few more, is there one more? Oh, what's the bottom line?
So these were the rate increases, you know, this was based on a forty-five million dollar capital project. And it looks like a ten dollar. Basically per year increase for four years, and I think that's what you saw in January. Is that right?
From Steve Donovan, yes.
And then the next slide shows the impact of going to fifty-eight, if we can make those changes. And so the worst case, which is the blue line up there, assuming the population doesn't grow at all and stick to a, um, fifteen dollars. A month for. Yeah, sorry, ten dollars a year for five years, so it's an extra ten dollar increase. So the rates would, would increase fifteen dollars a month over.
We saw in January.
What is the, what, what would the deferred cost do to that curve? Like, how much deferred cost isn't accounted for in those rates?
It's only the three million dollars.
Just three million.
Yeah.
Do you know roughly what that breaks down to over that period, as far as the rate increase, what that three million's gonna do?
I don't.
I can't calculate it that fast.
Okay.
In my head.
Were these, were these, uh, Steve Donovan's?
We sent it to Steve and had him recalibrate it.
Yes.
I'll give, I'll give Steve a hand. He, he was the one person that said that this is gonna go up and that this, I mean, he just looked at it and said. And we were all like, nah, he doesn't always talk about it.
Donovan's having a, I told you so moment right now, yeah, just saying.
So this bumped the cost up to fifty-eight million, but we also were able to reduce the interest rate from two point four five to one percent. Thank you to, uh, qualifying for that DEQ program, so that.
Accounted for in this?
Yes, so that's why it probably isn't as significant as I was originally thinking. I was thinking it was probably gonna be closer to. A hundred and thirty a month, but it's, you know, at the worst case, a hundred and, a hundred and eleven-ish. Which I don't, uh, we have twelve hundred lots, I, we're not gonna not grow. But we'll probably be somewhere between the red and green line, depending on, especially with interest rates dropping. I think we'll see more growth.
Alright.
So that pretty much all the slideshow.
The next one's for next, next steps and decisions to be made, so. You know, if we choose to continue, can incorporate the V items in the ninety percent. Uh, we're gonna continue to design a budget, so. There aren't any future cost increases that aren't accounted for. Uh, we need DEQ approval on the deferment downfall. Um. We gotta, like I said, complete the SERV process to get the funding released. And then we need to get EWA one purchased as fast as we can. We, we stopped designing when we saw the cost estimate after sixty percent, so we haven't started on ninety. Cuz we weren't sure what direction you would want to go. Um. So assuming that we can get back to work, that ninety percent would be done in January and then Slade would mobilize for construction in the spring. Uh, that means that we would not be meeting our current MAO deadline and we would need to file for an extension.
Yeah. Jonathan, to give some. How confident are you in your numbers? I mean, I, I just, quite frankly, I. I'm not convinced that you're not gonna come back at ninety percent and pitch me eighty at this point. I mean, I'm not, I'm gonna be frank, I'm not, I'm not convinced that you're gonna go, you had a twenty percent contingency built in and you still missed by seventy percent. And you got thirty percent more to go. What, I mean, what are we really looking at? Can somebody in this room give me an honest number, honest? Cuz I don't buy it. I don't.
So we did the sixty and, and we did the VE from there. And, and the thirty percent wasn't our number, whether we should have reviewed it and, and spoke up sooner. Um, but we feel pretty confident in our sixty percent number with the contingency on it. That it's a very reasonable target for the, what we've laid out for you. But we don't typically see huge rises when we go to GMP and we're gonna GMP at the ninety percent. Um, you know, the big caveat sometimes is the bidding market, but we should be able to attract plenty of bidders in this region.
You know, it's funny, you're, you're saying the exact words I heard Kennedy Jenks tell me. Back when we first looked at this at forty-two, told me the same things. We feel comfortable, we should be able to hit this number without exact, the words were exact. That's a little hard to swallow after I heard it once, and now I've gotta sell this to the taxpayers out there. And I can tell you, this is not gonna go over well for us. Um, Peter had it right on when he talked about this, he says, you know, I'm sitting up here trying to make a decision whether I wanna spend fifty-eight million dollars. And am I confident that number's gonna stay the same or not, and sell that to the public in their rates? You know, that's a hard one, that's a hard one to swallow for me, it's a hard one for me to sell. Now, I don't know where my counsel sits here, but I'm having a real hard time trusting that this is all gonna just go over real smoothly and it's all gonna sail perfect from here out. Uh, so, me personally, I cannot stand behind this where it sits. I know that's gonna put a damper on a lot of things and probably put us on a very hard line with DEQ and everybody else. But I'm having a real hard time with it. Jerry, go ahead.
So this, this question is for everybody on this side of the room. Um, how, I, I liked the idea of having a third party person come in and, and review this thing and go over it and compare it. Um, I liked that idea. Um, I think that, you know, if, if it costs us. If it costs us eighty thousand dollars to have somebody come in, come in and do this, and they figure out that. You know, we're paying five million dollars too much. That, that, that's worth it to me. That's, that's worth it to me. I don't know how, what it, what it's gonna put, what it's gonna look like as far as put our timeframe. But, um, I think that somebody can come in here and, you know, somebody could come in and, uh, you know, a third party person. That, you know, maybe doesn't have anything to do, maybe hasn't done any business with, with either, either company before. A truly independent person, um, come in and do, and audit this whole process, audit the whole estimate. And, uh, you know, say, no, you, you know, we're looking at, you know, the, the total, the seventy-two million, no, we're looking at more of a total of sixty-five million. You know, to me, I, I think that, you know, having that, having that put in place, having somebody come in and do that is valuable. I think that e- even if we save, even if, you know, even if they save us a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There's value in that to me. Um, but if we can po- potentially save, you know, more, I'm, I mean, I'd be willing to look at that.
I think, uh, Millie, you explained it to me on these agencies that we would use to do something like this. Kind of, why don't you give them a outlook on how these companies work and what their percentage is when they come in, um, and do their process?
Yeah, so I have had multiple conversations, it's a kind of, the kind of contract it is with the rules, um, the state contracting rules. We don't, I don't have to put out a formal RFP cuz it's a small enough contract. Um, however, because of our loan that we're getting, I need to have, um, at least three good faith conversations. Meaning I don't have, like, this person is already picked. conversations, meaning I don't have, like, this person is already picked out, um and I'm just talking to them just to check off the list, I have to have three good faith conversations with different firms. One of them came back and said, hey, Will, um we won't charge you anything unless we can save you twice our cost. And then if, but anything over that, we'll take twenty percent up. I'm like, that's just, so I called them back, I'm like, that just doesn't seem, um I don't think this, I don't think that's how we want to roll here, you know, if there's gonna be savings to the community, it's gonna go to the community. And and they, they said, well, we've actually never done that before, I just thought I'd throw it, I don't know why he thought he'd throw it out there, um so. But it's not a common thing, so and then the other ones, the other firms were gonna send me some um hard costs for like, how did they do us, they do a takeoff of the sixty percent and then come back at ninety and also review that. So we could do, um so that was, but when I talked to you mayor, I had, I just had just got that email and I'm like, that, that seems very strange.
I thought that would help Jerry understand the problem I'm having with these.
Yeah.
Outside agencies, their percentage of what they want to take.
But, but now they don't, but we're not gonna do, I didn't, I told them, we didn't want to do that.
That's not a typical.
Yeah, I told them, we didn't want to, yes, question?
I guess, are they coming in to negotiate pricing from a vendor that you're gonna purchase the material from, or are they just looking at your numbers and saying your numbers are off? If they were off.
They're just policing the.
There's different ways to do it, but typically, uh the city would hire a third party, uh totally independent, and we wouldn't talk to them other than we typically would pass them budgetary quotes from vendors like for uh, you know, process equipment type of stuff we're designing around, we would give them the quotes we procured. Because we're gonna be reaching out to the exact same person to get the exact same quote. Uh and we would give them a copy of our contract and that's it. So we're, we're.
But they would just, are they gonna be acquiring anything, or they're just going and shopping and getting a bid?
No, they're.
And then they're gonna compare their bid to your bid and say, you guys were off, you were two hundred thousand high, for instance. And they say, oh, well, this, this number's off, it's not really a true cost savings, because when you go to purchase it, are you you're not using your estimates, you're gonna acquire them, if it's a thousand dollars and you estimated it was five thousand dollars, but when you go to buy it, it's a CMGC, you're gonna buy it for a thousand dollars and you're gonna get your, your management fee for, for managing the project. It's not changing the cost of what we're paying for anything.
They're typically an estimating service only, it's not like if their price is better, you hire them to build your plan.
No, yeah, I.
Yeah, they, they're providing a, a, a service to, to tell you what they think your job is worth and, and we have what we think your job is worth. And then we fully participate in the review process after they turn in their estimate. And and if they have a better way of doing something, we can certainly change ours if, if, you know, they have a better way of doing it.
It's, uh they'll look at the value engineering as well as like the design process or just acquiring material. I, I've, I've never been a part of that process, I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around it. If they come in and say, well, this tank, we're not gonna do steel tank, we're gonna do this tank and it's gonna save this much money, are they saying we're gonna go buy the exact same steel glass line tank? We found a new source for it and it's cheaper than what you're estimating, which, which one is it? Are they changing the things that you're buying, or are they just looking for the cheapest source or the accurate price for that item?
They would typically just bid your design, not give you design feedback and uh we're totally open, if they know somebody builds a tank for cheaper, they can offer that. Uh and I don't know if they provide value engineering services as well, um that's not as typical.
What's the cost and the timeline for the third party?
I have seen anywhere from thirty to eighty thousand dollars, but I haven't dug into each one to make sure that how, what their process is. The timeline, I think, would be, it would be four or five weeks, possibly six weeks before we get the the cost estimate back, so that would put us, if we say six weeks, that would put us um in the middle of November. And so if we could get um permission from council and agreement to continue going forward towards the ninety percent engineering. So we're moving forward again, um and then concurrently do this cost estimating to see where we're coming out. Actually, I, when, in talking with them, um one of them has said that, you know, sometimes we see things that, oh, they didn't have. Like when um Slade started, we're looking at Kennedy Jenks models and you didn't put in enough of this and he's, they say sometimes, you know, it, we can, the cost will go down or the cost will go up, and we'll see things they don't need. Um it can make a recommendation, or we'll say, hey, you know, that we costed this all out, but we think you're short on this, and so it's another, uh it is another cook in the kitchen, um but it is also a third uh set of eyes on the, on the project, so if we could keep moving the whole thing forward. Um and then at the point we get to the, where the GMP is offered, then we'd have a choice again of, this is the actual cost and what do you want to do?
I mean, the timeline to, to go the public process to competitively bid, this would be about two months, right, extra? Yeah, so like, having an estimator, if an estimator takes six weeks in order to give us an idea of what they think we should be paying versus um what Slade is saying versus going out for a competitive bid and actually getting the bid based on the ninety percent is only two extra weeks. If that might have a lot more value than bringing in an estimator.
What's your experience with having a third party?
I mean, I, I, I think that the more complicate, the more parties that come into it, particularly, it's not like this is an arbitrator that can be like, yes, Slade is off by this much, city, you only have to pay X. Like, this is, like, Sean, so, you know, you've acknowledged there are a couple of things you guys met, your, your team missed that, that impacted costs a little bit. How good do you still feel about your number? Like, if you factor those few things in, how good do you feel about your number? We factored those things in, we'd be well over fifty. Okay. So the. But you wouldn't be at seventy two. I don't know, the more I look at Slade's cost estimate in detail, the takeoff is accurate. The numbers that they're, that they're inputting are accurate, right? Are they making conservative assumptions based on what they don't know? Probably. Right, but we just need to get on the same page with them. Yeah, I'm just. But my, my, my thought about a, a non-binding third-party estimator is that it's just, it's could delay things. It, and then let's say they come in and they're like, oh, they're high. And then we have the, I mean, I'm sure that Kennedy Jenks and Slade have already had these conversations. Like, you got the number and you're like, hey, what's going on here? And then had a back and forth. And like, I'll assume that, yeah, Slade needs to make money, so they're gonna conservatively bid this. And because they don't want to go from sixty to ninety with the giant markup. Right. And maybe that, so maybe, maybe the costs do come down, um but. The third-party cost estimator isn't gonna have authority over Sladen. Uh-uh. They're just, they're gonna say, they, this is how we estimate things, you know, why are you estimating it this? So if we, if we, if we really feel like this is off, the, the two extra weeks to actually go for a competitive bidding process.
We couldn't bid it right now, though.
No, we'd have to get it to ninety before we bid it.
Right, whereas right now, we could do the independent cost estimator, but I did talk to a friend of mine. Used to be on staff in a different city, retired, was on city council, so she's been seeing both sides, and she was kind of the same way, she's like, why, why would you need that? Because you have your engineer who is also overseeing, looking over things and the contract, you know, in the way that is the open book bidding. Um or you know, that we can look at everything, and when we get together with um Kennedy Jenks, Slade and the city team, Chris and his guys are there. Um it, we have really good discussions, good ideas come up. Um and so I I think that um we, we'd have to wait to bid.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that if, if we're talking about getting an extension from DQ, which we likely need. Um I, I just, I don't see a huge benefit in bringing in a third party to look at the numbers, I, I see more benefit to having Kennedy Jenks really drill into those numbers and then advising us on whether they think it makes sense for us to go with the competitive bidding process or continue with this process. And this will also give Slade an opportunity to take a harder look at their numbers, compare the project comps in the areas where those are being built and workforce issues with what's likely to be available here. And give them an opportunity to dial in their numbers a little bit. And then I think that you as a council will be able to make an informed decision on whether you want to take this out to bid or go with them after both sides have had an opportunity to dial in their numbers.
Yeah, I had two, two things, I, I don't see much value, i- is the third party, are they using the same numbers that you guys used to estimate?
They may be using a combination of things, they'll use RS means, but they'll probably also have bid tabs from similar construction that's recent that they'll be using. Right, which is kind of.
Why would they do that, not engineering firms that are providing a number for communities to estimate rates off of?
They just have access to more stuff than, than we do, you know, we, we know what projects we built and we can use those to our advantage, but they may have multiple sources.
And the only other question is, how much is the city paid Kennedy Jenks for a, for an estimate that was seventy percent off? How much did that cost us to provide that number?
So far?
Yeah.
Um a million and a half.
Is it getting discounted any by the percentage that it was off?
Oh, not for the estimate, like the.
Like, when you came and gave the presentation and said that it was forty two million dollars, how much did that cost us for you to provide that number?
The estimate, I have to get into our scope, Mike, to give you the number, but less than a hundred thousand.
Cause they're doing all the engineering, so we're paying them for the engineering of the project, so it kind of all gets blended together, I think so far we've, we've paid two point six.
I, I can understand what Peter's saying about um just having them work out the numbers there, but I can also see the benefit of having a third party look at this, kind of going to what, what the mayor was saying. Where it would be hard to take this to the, the people and say, we're gonna roll with it with a seventy to eighty percent increase in costs. Um to me, this gives, this empowers the city, the council to be able to say, we've looked at everything, we've, we've, we've taken a step back from the folks that have been working on this, pulled in another party. It, it, it doesn't hold anyone to those numbers. But it empowers us to know that, yes, what they are doing is, is right, it's, it's correct, or we're able to save money, something like that. Either way, it, it uh solidifies the direction that we're going. And, and I like the idea of moving forward while we're still looking into that third party doing this too.
Very.
So um my point with the whole third-party thing is, we got this estimate down here. Then we got this estimate up here. There's just, to me, there's just too much, y- you know, too much of a gap, and then we have to value engineer to get those, to get those numbers, you know, to get those numbers to me, I just, I would feel more comfortable having, you know, an independent third-party look at this, um you know, I would feel more comfortable having, having them look at this before we just flat out tell the community it is what it is. You know, um I, I, like Paul said, I would want to make sure that we're doing anything and everything we can to make sure that the, the, the numbers that we're paying, you know, are, are legit, they're real numbers. And not somebody just trying to make their year off of our community, you know what I'm talking about? I just there, there's other choice words that I wanted to put in there, but um after a conversation earlier, uh I'm, I'm keeping those inside. But um I just, I don't want our community to be taken advantage of, this is something that we need. This is something that we have to do, and these contractors know that this is something we need and we have to do it. So I just want to make sure that this, this wonderful city that we live in, that we all love, isn't being taken advantage of. You know, during this process.
Mister Mayor, from, from a cost analysis, this extension for a third-party contractor, and you were just getting ready to say it's gonna move our deadline anyway before we interrupted you on accident, but what are we talking about? What does that move that needle and cost? Like, what's it gonna cost us to extend our deadline?
What to extend our deadline with? If we do a third party and we can currently be moving ahead to ninety percent. Um it's, I don't think there's any real difference there in the, in the, I don't think we'll have time lost. Um it'll just inform us that when, they'll do a sixty percent takeoff, and then when we get to ninety, they'll do that also, well, cause you'll have to do a cost estimate at ninety, right? That's how you figure out what the, what you're, what you're gonna offer for the guaranteed maximum price.
Be bidding everything out, so.
So it will take a, a little. Mm-hmm.
So they'll do the third-party cost estimate on the sixties, we'll, we'll reconcile if there is a difference, and there is. Uh and then at ninety, we'll provide them with all of the bids and outreach, and they'll have those numbers to review, plus whatever is is outside of the bidding process.
Okay, so I don't, I don't see it taking any extra time, I just see it providing you additional information when it comes time to say, yes, we'll accept this guaranteed maximum price. Or no, we're gonna put it out to bid, but I know you're kind of the expert on contract.
I mean, they're, in order to do it, they're going to have to have the conversations with our current team, I mean, it's like, it's not like they just get these numbers in in a vacuum. It's a lot of back and forth, we'll, we'll spend hours on the phone with that third party trying to. Right, so, so my, my experience is that it does delay, and so if we're talking about six weeks, because Kennedy Jenks is busy and so is Slade, and so if they're time doing, doing this, then they're not moving forward on the ninety percent. So what, that's why I said, if this is gonna take six weeks, it, that, whereas the public noticing to bid this, and then that's going to be the, the true testing of the numbers, because we're gonna have um probably the three companies that looked at this previously and, and maybe others bidding it. Then for not that much more time, I'm not saying that you should do that as a council, I'm saying that if I'm looking at the most effective options that could reduce funds. Um that's likely the one, and then I think that that's also going to make everybody really dial in their numbers, because if Slade is gonna have to competitively bid this against other companies, then they're going to um, you know, still, they're still gonna be conservative in their numbers, but I think we're going to get their truest everyone's best idea. Um and again, I'm not suggesting that we do that because we don't have the ninety percent, but if I'm thinking about, if we're thinking about delaying the six weeks for a third-party who's not really going to do anything binding versus eight weeks to competitively bid, that would be my recommendation uh based on my history of public contracting.
Uh one question, because we're down to about thirty minutes, so we need to wrap this up, if you just want a very brief break. Um is there any interest in looking at trying to build this on the site that we are on right now? If that would save us two to five million dollars, but leaving it, trying to run the la- other plant concurrently while we're building.
Forwards, we've been there.
So we don't, okay.
A mute point, I am not gonna go back to day one. When the city is depending on us to make a choice for a better system, for a better tomorrow, and sit there and put it right back in the same places, it was, it was cheaper. That, that would, that would just be, no, that's not even an option in my books, but.
I'd, I'd just like to share my, my closing opinion on this, just, I think that I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards what Peter says, I, I, I by no means, Jerry, I fully understand what you're saying, I by no means think we just say it is what it is.
No.
It walked forward, I don't feel like anybody on this council's attitude is that, like, I don't think it is and is what it is. I do believe we owe the citizens our due diligence, I agree with that. But I just don't see what the benefit is in spending a hundred thousand dollars to have a piece of information that doesn't change anything anyway. So if they're off by their numbers, we can pray that they'll reconcile and maybe be like, oh, okay, we could fix this or go back and forth and we'll come down here or whatnot. But that's unproductive, I like Peter's idea, make it competitive, let's see true numbers so that we can get a real number to present to the community. Because right now, hypothetically, we're in a thirty million dollar balloon.
Yeah.
You know, like that, well, it could cost us this, it could cost you that, it could, let's get the most realistic number and make a decision from there, that's my opinion.
And I, I'm in agreement, I think Peter's idea was probably the safest bet at this point uh to not delay anything going forward, so we're still on the timeline. But at the same time, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to get at that true number and, and decide our fate. Um so yeah, that's, I think that's the, the direction, I don't know if council is in agreement on that.
Go, everybody want to do a closing thought? Do you have closing thoughts or?
Mike, go ahead.
I'm in agreement that I don't think, I don't think a third party is gonna change the price that it's built for, I like the idea of getting the actual, getting to ninety percent, but I do have a quick question, what, what is the cost from us going from sixty to ninety percent engineering? What's that gonna cost? Like, if we decide to move forward with that, what's, what's that cost estimate?
Oh, it, it's gonna be additional to our contract, because now we're having significant changes to what was the, or now.
If we stay at the same site, we'll, we'll be able to get it done for.
Within our, with, with, within our contract.
Changes.
What is that number?
Is that one million more?
Try to go from sixty to ninety, it would be about eight hundred thousand.
And I mean, there's no other, I, I just want to make sure I'm got my head wrapped around it, the, the membrane system. The, the membrane system's a system we have to go with at that facility. That's, that's what we need to go. We're not going to, there's not an option to scrap and go with a more economical process. We're moving, is it that?
Do it, it would be like five. It would be like five steps back. We'd have to start over.
Not realistic.
I did talk to a city, I talked to Mill City who was doing a different uh, technology. And after talking with you and then calling, I called Mill City too. Um, the, the less expensive, well, the sequencing batch reactor, so the membrane. Um, would need an additional, according to, probably need additional treatment besides just that. And when I talked to Mill City, they said they expected it to be between forty and fifty million dollars for their plant. And they don't even have it approved at DEQ yet. So they're like way back in the process and there's, they're thinking. They're still on happy land where they think it's going to cost forty to fifty million dollars.
They're half our size.
Gotcha.
The city.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with moving forward towards ninety percent. And then if we don't like the numbers, send it out for competitive bid.
Okay, that's, that's where.
Yeah, that, so that's, that's what we're, we're talking about then. Just keep moving forward, get to ninety percent and then send it out for competitive bid.
Right, and, and our staff needs to have conversations with DEQ to inform them of all this. I think given the increase in the cost. Um, that, and our staff has a great relationship with DEQ. That they'll hopefully be flexible on those timelines because we need some flexibility from them.
And we also have to have, all these VE items are not yet approved by DEQ. So that, the costs for the uh, down to fifty-eight million. DEQ might come back and say, you can't do it this way. So that's not. I don't want, I don't want you guys to get tied to that number when DEQ might come back and, and want to change things.
Does the increase in cost affect the one percent?
No.
It can, we can be absorbed into that.
That, it's not going to, it's not going to change the terms of our loan. I, I, I haven't talked to Rebecca because we hadn't settled on a final number, if they can continue to fund that entire amount, but I think they can.
Okay.
We still have to decide which items we would want going forward into the ninety percent design, like the MVR building going away. If we, if a majority of us want that in there, then we need to make those decisions today.
Yes, so that they can continue to engineer towards ninety percent.
So so far I've noted that you do, you want to keep a building around the headworks. And you also want to keep the demo of the old site in the, in this. Um, and, and then we'll see whether it, it pencils out at that time.
As, as an alternate or something thrown back in.
I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I, 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 I don't like the reducing the size of the shop. Um, I think they need the workspace. And the way the city is growing, they're going to need more workspace, probably than what we're, we had originally provided, so. Yeah, I don't want to reduce the size of the shop.
We did reduce it from, we gave, Chris and the guys gave the approval for, to go from like two bays to one bay. But we could talk about how, how much that could come back out and be useful for them.
Well, and we, we aren't planning on tearing down the building that currently has the screw press in it. So that's still uh, going to be a usable space for the guys after we take the screw press out of there and move it into the new facility.
I do want them to have showers.
Yes.
They have a break room.
Yes, yes. We, we're all in agreement with that. Showers, laundry facilities, you know, a, a space, yes.
And we're still growing. I mean, look at the numbers, look at the houses that are on the ground, ones that are still coming. There's no doubt that our public works is going to grow and they're going to need everything they can get. So the idea that we cut any of that is, is not optional. So thank you, Jerry, for putting that in. So I've got one more thing I just wanted to put out there. So this third, third-party thing, this is my inexperience, me not knowing. This is just a, you know, an idea that was, that I was told to me and I really liked the idea of getting more information. And, but if the process of competitive bid is going to get us that same information or better information. To take back to, you know, to, to take back to the community, I, I'm all for that. I want to, I want to come up with, you know, with real accurate numbers, just like the rest of you, you know, and that's. And however we get to that point, um, you know, those of you with the experience that, you know, that, that, that have been part of this kind of thing. You know, we're relying on you guys to help us get there. Um, but I want real numbers. I don't want, I, I mean, this thirty million dollar difference, just like I said, that was, that was too much. It's too much, so um, I just want to get there and I don't want to, I don't want to pay a lot more and get less, you know? This community deserves. Deserves that facility to be a good first-rate facility.
Okay, all right.
Can I make a quick comment? Okay, I just want to make sure I've been understood, uh, when talking about competitive bidding. That the, the GMP process will be competitive. So Slayden was selected as the general contractor, but we, we bid out typically eighty percent of the project. And what's left is our core competencies uh, to build treatment plant specific things. Um, and, and if there's no trust between Slayden and the city, we can bid those out as well. So, you know, we.
Currently, you guys are planning on only doing eight percent, ninety-two percent of it's going to competitive bid. Because you said twenty there, I thought I saw someone on a slide that was saying the eight percent was your guys' scope.
Eight percent is their fee.
Their fee, okay, I misunderstood, thank you.
We, we self-perform concrete, mechanical. Uh, equipment setting, kind of the, the treatment plant specific scopes, the water bearing structures and, and setting the.
The big liability issues.
The things that you want your treatment plant to work right, yes. Those, those are our core competencies. So that's, that's what we would be talking about negotiating. The, the rest of it, the electrical, the HVAC, the, the framing of the admin building. Um, painting, you know, the, the supply of the concrete ready mix of the pipe, of the valves, all of that's competitively bid. So that's historically about eighty percent of the project, competitive, publicly advertised, low bid. Um, and then the part that we negotiate is, is the productivity on our self-performed scopes, which is typically audited. You know, totally transparent by either third-party or Kennedy Jenks, the city, however we want to do that, so. I mean, and the burden's on us to, to provide you a GMP that you trust.
Yeah.
So I'm hearing, keep moving forward, we're going to start, keep, get moving forward to ninety percent. So we can move again, um, see what the GMP will be. With always knowing we have the option to bid the whole thing out if, if we're not happy with this. But I, I do, I need to understand that process better and how it is, eighty percent is bid out and. Um, so that we can, so it is transparent, can be explained. Um, and then work on getting extensions with DEQ um, for our, for our VE items.
PGE federal.
Oh, and yep, and the work, work with, get working with FERC.
Yeah, that's, that's going to have to be separate.
Were there any other items that Chris, that there are value engineering that was changing, that was removing something from the project that they didn't agree with? That they were concerned about, like something that was being taken away from the project that they were concerned about keeping in.
Excepted Chris and his crew went over with us. We sat here with, with Chris and his crew and went over everything over. So of the, what was it, forty-one items? There was a lot of them that they were like, no, we can't, we can't do that at all.
But they were great to sit and work with us and go through all the details. And if they said, no, then we said, no, we're not, we don't want to take that. Because they know, you know, they know how the operations go. And I feel like this is a really good team. Um, so we've got engineering, we've got the builders, we've got the operators, we've got the oversight and the elected, you know, representatives from the community. Um, and to make sure that this is all coming together with the best value and what we need to have. Um, it just takes having hard conversations like this to make sure that we're on the right track. We're all on the same page and we are getting best value and what we need. So, thank you for doing this tonight.
All right, and we thank you for coming. Like I said, sorry we put you through this. I know you're all going to go home and get a drink. I get it. Um, it's hard to take all that, us coming at you for a couple hours, but. We appreciate you coming forward and we hope we can come to a conclusion of this whole thing and get this job done. So thank you again for coming tonight.
We'll keep working and we're not done.
Sure. All right, we appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody have any comments you'd like to make before we?
Okay, thank you guys for your time, but I appreciate it.
This workshop is closed and we will be back.